All right, it's seven o'clock. I'll call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council on September 21st in City Hall Forum. The first item is roll call.
Roll call shows all seven city councilors are present.
And next is the pledge. If you please stand.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is special order of the day and announcements. There are none, although I would note to anyone who's in the audience who has an interest in it or who might be watching at home, the City Council will not be looking at item 11C this evening. We will be looking at that in a couple, in two weeks at our next session. Item four is public hearings. 4A is a resolution, is a public hearing rather, on a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow outdoor seating and the outdoor possession and consumption of alcohol in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for property located at 1180 Madison Road. This is before the council tonight, following a plan commission recommendation for approval 4-0. Ms. Christensen, could you give us the staff report, please?
The Alibi Bar and Grill has applied for a conditional use permit to establish an outdoor seating area, which would include the outdoor possession and consumption of alcohol on property located at 1180 Madison Road. The property is located on the southwest side of Madison Road between Cleveland and Grant Streets. The site plan, which was included in the staff report, shows the location of the proposed outdoor seating area, which is approximately 1,240 square feet in area. The seating area will contain a maximum of two tables with up to 16 chairs for a maximum occupancy of 16 people. The applicant intends to add a door to the building to provide direct access to seating area from inside the bar only. There will also be an exit on the east side of the seating area to allow patrons to exit quickly in case there's an emergency. The applicant intends to install a six-foot-tall solid wood or woodgrain vinyl fence around the outdoor seating area for privacy and security. The final architectural design and color for this fence, as well as the addition of a door to the building, will be reviewed and approved by planning staff during the architectural review phase of the project. Staff recommends that a gate equipped with panic hardware be installed as part of the fence to allow for the egress of patrons from the outdoor seating area in an emergency situation. The floor of the seating area will be cement, and the applicant is proposing to install landscaping between the fence and the Madison Road right-of-way. This was sent out to all of our review agents. The clerk's office did note that the business owner's alcohol license must be amended to include the outdoor seating area before it may be established, and it is scheduled to go before Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee on October 13th. Staff has noted that there's not enough parking on site for the additional capacity. The owner has submitted two shared parking agreements with neighbors, which will meet the parking requirement of code. Planning staff does recommend that an exit-only or do-not-enter sign be placed on the property facing Cleveland to remind patrons that the parking lot is configured to allow one-way traffic to exit onto Cleveland. And we are recommending that the landscaping next to the building that's going to be removed be placed between the fence and the Madison Road right-of-way, and that approximately 90 landscape units be required, which is equivalent to three evergreen shrubs. The rest of the review agents did not have any comments or concerns. A resident did email staff expressing his opposition to this conditional use permit that was included in the staff report. And the staff report also contains a map of the properties that were individually sent mailed notices. Plan Commission held a public hearing on September 9th and recommended approval subject to the conditions listed in the resolution, which are that this conditional use permit authorizes an outdoor seating area and the outdoor possession and consumption of alcohol within the outdoor seating area on the property located at 1180 Madison Road. The applicant must install a fence and/or enclosure around the outdoor area to be used for outdoor seating and the possession and consumption of alcohol. The fence shall be solid and constructed with polyvinyl material and shall be no greater than six feet in height. There must be an emergency exit from the outdoor seating area onto the property, and a sign must be installed to identify it. The emergency exit must feature maintained panic hardware. All exit doors must swing in the direction of egress. All exit pathways must be 36 inches in width, must be marked with paint or differing floor colors, and must remain clear at all times. The occupancy limit for the outdoor area must be posted and maintained. There must be sufficient ambient lighting in the outdoor area to prevent falls. The outdoor seating area shall be no larger than 1,300 square feet in area and shall consist of no more than two tables and 16 chairs, and have a maximum occupancy of 16 people. A shared parking agreement with a neighboring property owner within 500 feet of the front entrance must be maintained at all times if the outdoor seating area is open to patrons, and at least eight off-street parking spaces must be provided by that agreement. 90 units of landscape materials must be installed between the proposed fence and the Madison Road right-of-way. An architectural review certificate and fence permit are required before any fence, enclosure, or other exterior renovations are made. The applicant must amend the existing liquor license for the premises to include the outdoor seating area before the use may be established, and the applicant and property owner must meet all other requirements of the City of Beloit Municipal Code. And Plan Commission did unanimously recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Ms. Christensen. I'll open the public hearing on 4A, a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow outdoor seating and the outdoor possession and consumption of alcohol in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for property located at 1180 Madison Road. Does anyone wish to address the council on 4A? If so, please step forward. All right, a second call. Does anyone wish to address the council on the conditional use permit for the outdoor possession and consumption of alcohol in a C2 neighborhood commercial district at 1180 Madison Road? And lastly, again, the third call. Does anyone wish to address the council on a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow outdoor seating and the outdoor possession and consumption of alcohol in a C2 commercial district at 1180 Madison Road? I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion to approve 4A. Is there such a motion?
Motion to approve 4A.
Second.
Mr. Noonam, Mr. Dench, additional counselor questions or comments? Ms. DeForest?
I do have one question, Ms. Christensen. Just to be sure, there were no other residents that expressed concern about this at Plan Commission besides this one written email that we received?
I actually wasn't at Plan Commission, but Jim was.
No, no one was, no one was present at the Plan Commission.
All right, thank you.
All right, any additional questions or comments? And I'll call a question. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. 4B is a public hearing on a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for 1543, 1546 Henry Avenue, 1677, and 1681 Sherman Avenue, 1552, and 1626 Summit Avenue, Summit Avenue, from M2 General Manufacturing District to M1 Limited Manufacturing District. This is before the council for a first reading, following a plan commission recommendation 4-0 for approval. Ms. Christensen, could you give us the staff report, please?
Sure. Staff has requested the rezoning of the parcels you already listed. These six properties are located in a small industrial pocket along the Iowa-Chicago and Eastern Railroad line on the near-east side of the city. The majority of the surrounding properties are located in an R1B single-family residential district, and planning staff feels that changing the zoning district to M1 Limited Manufacturing District may protect the surrounding single-family neighborhood from possible future intense land uses on these properties. Existing land uses on all six properties are permitted in both M1 and M2 zoning districts, and the proposed zoning change will not cause the uses of any of these properties to become legal non-conforming to the existing zoning ordinance. Staff is proposing the zoning change not to limit business and industrial opportunities for the property owners, but to protect the integrity of the surrounding single-family neighborhood by not allowing more intense uses on the properties. Staff believes that this rezoning to a less intense district will allow more flexibility for future land uses with fewer negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. Included in your packet was a table outlining the uses permitted, permitted with a conditional use permit, and prohibited in the M1 and M2 districts. Only two uses, which are currently allowed in M2, are prohibited in M2 and M1, and they are waste-related uses and adult uses. A motor vehicle racetrack is currently conditional in M2, but would be prohibited in M1 as well. The other limitation by rezoning to M2 is amount of outdoor storage. In M2, it is 25% of the lot area; in M1, it is 10%, and then you can increase it somewhat by conditional use. However, a number of land uses are currently prohibited in M2, but would be allowed or conditional in M1, such as community service uses, retail sales, college uses, repair-oriented retail sales, and limited vehicle service. Which is why we brought this forward, because you've got two buildings for sale and next to residential neighborhoods. And just at least one of the requests we received was for one of these type of uses that would need the M1 and a conditional use to locate there. Plan Commission held a public hearing at its meeting on September 9th and recommended approval of the request. United Stars Industries, Inc., the property owner of 1543 and 1546 Henry, has submitted a zoning protest petition opposing the change in zoning of these two properties, and a favorable vote of at least three quarters, three-fourths of the city council members present and voting on the members shall be required to approve the application.
All right, thank you, Ms. Christensen. I'll open the public hearing on 4B, a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for 1543 and 1546 Henry Avenue, 1677, and 1681 Sherman Avenue, 1552, and 1626 Summit Avenue, from M2 General Manufacturing District to M1 Limited Manufacturing District. Does anyone wish to address the council on that proposed ordinance? If so, please step forward. Again, does anyone wish to address the council on a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for 1543, 1546 Henry, 1677, 1681 Sherman Avenue, 1552, and 1626 Summit Avenue, from M2 General Manufacturing to M1 Limited Manufacturing District? And the third call. Does anyone wish to address the council on a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for 1543, 1546 Henry, 1677, 1681 Sherman, 1552, and 1626 Summit Avenue, from M2 General Manufacturing District to M1 Limited Manufacturing District? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
To approve 4B?
Yes, somebody over?
To lay over, excuse me. That's right, this is a first reading. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Dench, any further counsel comments or questions? Mr. Dench?
If I could ask Ms. Christensen, given the fact that for the two addresses on Henry Avenue, there is protest petition, would you explain what would be involved in simply removing those two properties from this action?
Under Section 1, it gives the legal descriptions of each of the properties. At the end of each paragraph, you can see the addresses. So the first one is 1543 Henry, the second one is 1546 Henry Avenue. So if you wanted to proceed without those two properties, which are subject of the protest petition, I would suggest then you remove those two.
And of course, if the property owner, if that were to occur, and the property owner later found it advantageous to rezone to M1, it would be a relatively simple, simple matter of coming back to the council with it.
Yeah, I would just have to go back through the same process. It would have to go back through Plan Commission and council again as a new application.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have.
All right, Mr. Noonam?
Thank you. One of the unique features about the majority of these properties is their proximity to the rail lines, and I believe, if I'm reading this correctly, that this change in no way affects the freight movement usage.
No, it doesn't.
The properties are correct.
No, it doesn't.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, any other counselor questions or comments? All right, the motion is to lay the matter over for two and a second reading, presumably in two weeks or our next meeting. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Next item is item number five, citizens' participation. I haven't received any documentation that anyone wishes to address the council this evening, but if anyone is present and wishes to do so, please step forward at this time. Give us your address, name, and we'll proceed. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda consists of items A through F. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. First of all, do any counselors wish an item removed from the consent agenda? Very well, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Levy, Ms. Johns, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Item number seven is ordinances. This evening, 7A is a proposed ordinance attaching the property located at 1934 Crane Avenue to the city of Beloit. This is before the council for a first reading with a request to suspend the rules and proceed to a second reading. There is a plan commission recommendation for approval 4-0. Ms. Christensen, can you give us the staff report, please?
The owner of the property located at 1934 Crane Avenue in the Lyndale Place Island and the Town of Turtle has submitted a petition for attachment to the city. This property is located on the west side of Crane Avenue, just north of Walgreens, and the applicant is seeking this attachment due to a failing septic system on his property with the intent to hook up to city sewer. The city's boundary agreement with the Town of Turtle states that if the sanitary septic system on a property in a town island fails, and the Rock County Health Department determines that the septic system cannot be repaired or replaced, the property owner may petition the city of Beloit to attach to the city for the purpose of obtaining city sewer service. The Rock County Health Department has been notified of, notified of the failing septic system and supports connections to public sewer, sewer service systems when one is available. That letter was included in staff report. When a property is attached to the city, a temporary zoning classification must be assigned until an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment is adopted by the city council. The applicant is requesting the R1B Single Family Residential District, which staff would also recommend due to the size, location, and surrounding land uses. And that zone map amendment will come back forward through you, but I believe this ordinance actually assigns a temporary zoning classification of R1B. Plan Commission reviewed this item on September 9th and recommended approval of the attachment petition.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. This is before the council for a first reading. First, is there a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to action on the merits?
Mr. President, I would move to suspend the rules and proceed directly to a vote.
Second.
All right, Mr. Dench and Mr. Noonam, any counsel questions or discussions on that? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Is there an underlying, or is there a motion to adopt the underlying resolution attaching 1334 Crane Avenue?
I'd move to approve.
All right, Mr. Haynes?
Second.
And Ms. Johns. Again, any counselor questions or comments? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. Item number eight is appointments. This evening, we have a recommendation from your Appointment Review Committee, which met on the 14th of September, and makes the following recommendations. For the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, the recommendation is to appoint Shannon Sharmer as the school board representative for the year 2009-2010. For the Community Development Authority, the recommendation is to appoint Stephanie Jacobs to a term expiring actually in a couple months, filling a term to the Municipal Library Board. Recommendation is to appoint Shannon Sharmer as the school board representative for the upcoming, or current rather, I guess it is, school year. The Parks and Rec, excuse me, Parks Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, recommendation is to appoint Tia Johnson as the school board representative again for the current school year. Also to appoint Roger Christensen, Anna Kotke, and Steve Furger. To the Traffic Review Committee, the recommendation is to appoint Carol Fryer and Terry Fell. Is there a motion to approve the recommended appointments?
I would move that we adopt these appointments as red.
Second. All right, Mr. Dench, Mr. Levy, additional counselor questions or comments? Very well, I'll call a question. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. There are the following vacancies that exist on city boards and commissions, and I will announce those. For the Board of Appeals, there is a vacancy for a second alternate. For the Board of Review, a vacancy as an alternate, alternate for a resident. For the Cable Television Advisory Committee, there are two vacancies for residents. For the Disabled Parking Enforcement Assistance Council, there are two vacancies for residents. For the Equal Opportunities and Human Relations Commission, there are two vacancies for residents. For the Municipal Golf Committee, there's a vacancy for a youth position. And for the Parks Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, there's a vacancy for a youth representative. If you're interested in any of those positions, let myself know, or perhaps city manager after his office, and we'll look at that and get you the right information. Item number nine is counselor activities and upcoming events. Ms. DeForest, would you like to start us this evening?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. I had the opportunity to attend an alumni reception for our newest Beloit College president, Scott Beerman, and enjoyed that thoroughly, and understand that there is an upcoming community reception to be held in his honor. Appreciate the discussion with him and his commitment to further collaborations between the city and the community and the college, so looking forward to that in the future. I also attended a meeting of the Property Owners Association, and as usual, enjoy their spirited feedback, and am grateful to them for their input and desire to do its best for city and all of its residents, including those residents that are tenants. I would like to announce that I will be at the Neighbors Who Care meeting tomorrow. Would invite all Westside residents to attend that neighborhood association. That's tomorrow at 6:30 in the NHS Building, and look forward to seeing you there. If you're a Westside resident and have any neighborhood concerns, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Mr. Dench?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Levy?
Of course I have something. I would like to, first of all, talk to the, the youth of the city, to let them know as you go through school, you're going to hear people say whatever you learn in school, you don't use it all once you become an adult and get out on your own. I had an opportunity to speak at the big read that the Beloit College and the Beloit Library put on, and that came back to haunt me. One of the books that we read in high school, To Kill a Mockingbird, was one of the books that they were reading, so I wanted to dispel that myth that what you learn in school, that you don't have to remember. So I had to quickly think back to my high school days, which is just probably a couple years ago, and remember about Atticus Finch and the whole To Kill a Mockingbird. So if that statement is made, you know it's false, that whatever you're learning in school, you have to let it stick with you, because you don't know in life when it's going to come back, and you got to speak to that. I would like to congratulate Blackhawk Technical College for their opening house, for their Beloit Center located at Eclipse Center. Their student enrollment over there is already over 400, so we're looking for big things there. It's an exciting time for Beloit. And also, I had an opportunity to visit a program by a young lady and her family in Beloit by the name of Carol Hendricks. She has a business called Inspirations. It's located inside Merrill Community Center, and their students could go and learn music enrichment. They get tutorial, tutorial assistance from college students. She has various things to help promote positiveness in kids and teach them all about life, how to get a job, learning different music, the keyboards. But the biggest, biggest aspect is teaching them how to study, bringing their homework there, and making sure that they're successful as they go through the educational arena. So I'm excited for her and her family, wish them very well, and if you need to talk to Carol about this, you can give her a call at the Merrill Community Center. And then finally, if I could ask the city manager if at some point we can get a report from the EEOCHRC Commission just to kind of see what they've been doing in the last couple of years. I'm always interested to see what's going on there, so if we can just kind of get a report back as to what, what they've been up to, that'd great, they appreciate it. And those are my comments. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Haynes?
Nothing to add.
Ms. Johns?
I'll pass tonight, thank you.
And Mr. Noonam?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
All right, thank you. I will have the opportunity, I'm looking forward to it this coming Friday, to participate in the inauguration ceremony for President Beerman at the college, along with Reverend Prude and Mr. Thompson, the school superintendent, will be welcoming him to the community, and I certainly look forward to that, and on behalf of all Beloiters, will wish he and his administration well as he takes the reins as the 11th president of the college. And that's all I have. Item number 10 is city manager's presentation. We have none tonight. 11 is reports from boards and officers. 11A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a mutual cooperation agreement with Neighborhood Housing Services of Beloit, Inc. for the administration of the Wisconsin Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant. Ms. Christensen, could you give us the staff report, please?
The Neighborhood Stabilization Program was developed to provide emergency assistance for the redevelopment of abandoned and foreclosed homes and residential properties. The city of Beloit applied and was awarded a grant in the amount of 772-111, which will be utilized in Beloit's neighborhoods most affected by foreclosures. The city of Beloit and Neighborhood Housing Services, Inc. are proposing to enter into a mutual cooperation agreement to administer those funds. NHS will rehab four homes and provide homebuyer counseling and direct homeownership assistance to potential buyers of the homes, and the city will be the lead agency in administering the program. You had previously accepted the grant, and this application, which was actually done with Rock County and Janesville, and signed a mutual cooperation agreement with them, and this is really kind of the last piece of the puzzle, and you had actually also authorized the CDA to approve the purchases of the properties and the sale thereof after we have rehabbed them. This is kind of the last step in terms of the administrative steps, in terms of setting up the program.
All right, thank you, Ms. Christensen. Is there a motion to approve 11A?
Move approval.
Mr. Levy, Mr. Haynes, additional counselor questions or comments? All right, I'll call a question. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very well, motion carries 7-0. 11B is a budget, is a resolution awarding contract C09-14, amending the 2009 capital improvements budget and appropriating additional funds for the Cranston Road and Milwaukee Road intersection reconstruction project. Mr. Botts, can you give us the staff report, please, sir?
Yes, as I mentioned, this is to award the contract for the reconstruction of Cranston Road south of Milwaukee Road. What we'll do there is remove and replace existing failed pavement, add a permanent median barrier in where the temporary one is now, and add sidewalks in the area to make better pedestrian access throughout the area. This will be done yet this fall, and should be doing pretty well. The contractor is in town doing other concrete work next door here, so we've got, we've got a captive audience, and so we believe that this is a good project. We're also having to amend the capital improvement budget in order to fund, totally fund this project. It came in a little bit higher than what we'd anticipated in the original development of the, the project scope. So with that, we're asking the council to award the contract and also to amend the capital budget to allocate funds out of TIF 13, which is the TIF that funds the road improvement areas in the industrial park. We have a number of road improvements we're going to be doing in the area to update all the pavement in the industrial park area and to make better pedestrian access for the hotels along the Frontage Road. We did meet with the adjacent properties out there about the, the barrier in particular that we're putting in, and there was support for doing it, because it's a, it's a difficult traffic situation, and putting in, in the temporary barriers, I think, has greatly improved the traffic flow through the area. We don't get people getting stuck out in that. We don't get people getting stuck out in that, where the Frontage Road comes in and getting stuck with people trying to fly through Cranston Road. So I think it's a nice improvement. Plus, we're going to put streetlights in there, as well as medium plantings to make it softer, so it'll blend in with the area. And with that, we're asking the council to approve the resolution.
All right, thank you, Mr. Botts. Are there councilor questions of Mr. Botts? I guess I would have one, Mr. Botts. You indicated there'll be other road improvement projects forthcoming, not yet this season. This is the end of it for this season, isn't it?
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. DeForest?
I'm just wondering, in the future, is there other plans to have sidewalks go along that entire Frontage Road to facilitate hotel customers who might be trying to walk along that area for fast food, restaurants, and is that a plan?
Yes, that's the plan at this point, is to, correct, is to do that, because we need to make those improvements. We've seen, we're starting to see a lot more people walking through the area, and that's the reason, on these plans, you'll see some sidewalk locations for the street crossing in there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, additional councilor questions or comments? All right, is there a motion to approve 11B?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Levy and Mr. Noonam, all in favor signify by aye. Aye. Those opposed? Very well, motion carries seven zero. As I indicated at the beginning of the session, we will not be considering 11C this evening. We're looking at it at our next meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
All right, Ms. DeForest, Ms. Johns, all in favor, aye. Aye. Those opposed? Very well, we're adjourned. Thank you.